Go ahead and bring us up, Nancy.
You're up.
Okay, on the agenda, we have one amendment. Brian looked over the queueless contract from the assessor's office. They come back, though we talked about it on Tuesday, so that's the only adjustment to add that.
So that has been added?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented with the addition.
All in favor, have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. First on our agenda, we do not have a board of amends. That'll still be separate, right?
Yes, because it needs to be, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
But we have invoices and commissioners' reports.
Jen, I told Commissioner Moser, we are hoping that we have a better version of the commissioner report. We're working with the, one of our consultants today to see if we can get that one to work. Because right now, you have a good description on that one, but you don't know what fund a department, well, organ, object it's paid from, that's this report. But to keep it simple, I just told him to send you that one if you have questions of the department, all of them.
Okay. And I asked Christie already, because there's two Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There's three Blue Cross.
Well, two, two pa- two different papers come out. This one is for last week, and then this one, and the numbers didn't match, that's what confused me, is this is for this week, plus our admin fee for October.
And then I'll be on one report because we can. With our old system, you couldn't do it that way, because once you printed everything, it would've said E checks. This one, you can select what you pay and what you don't, so that we can do the process separate.
And then, just some of the things that I highlighted that kind of came to my attention, is that the coroner assist for Downard was $2,074. How was that budgeted? I mean, how, what, how, that Downard deal, how are we paying for that, I guess, is my question.
He's absorbing it within his budget, but we're putting in a separate line item, so that we can track it if need be, for any reporting or media requests. It's just, it's in the normal course of business, and the difference is, it was a big case, so hopefully it doesn't.
Was that 2,074? Was that for like the trailer rental, or costs with Downard?
That was Ada County.
But she says Ada County.
Oh.
Coroner assist Downard.
Because I, when I talked with Dottie, she didn't say they were going to bill us for their time, but it might've been just for the trailer or something at the expense of that. Or it might've been some for her doc.
They might've had.
I think it might be for her doc and the trailer.
Well, they probably had clean and sanitize after it was done, they probably had staff hours, so I wouldn't be surprised if there's, yeah, I mean.
I was just curious.
It's actually fairly cheap for what they were here.
Yeah, and I did, I just wondered, you know, how we're, where it come from, how we're tracking that.
It's a special deal.
We are tracking it separate, if you want me to get a better detail of what we paid for, I can help her.
That's fine, that's fine.
And then just, we did pay for Chamber Commerce.
What?
Yeah, and I don't, I need to, let me see who that was, oh, Chamber.
That's for all of us, right? It's, I thought.
Banning County's price was 4,000.
That would've been signed by you guys, because it comes out.
We talked about not doing it, but there was some elected officials that wanted to do it, so I, I just wanted, that's why I brought it up.
Well, and I think we need to have a sit down with Matt, and we need to have a very serious conversation with Matt about that. Because they're charging us the same as if every single person and the companies, everybody's using it and everybody's doing that. And that's, I think, we need to have a conversation, but.
Actually, we come down, we was 5,000.
Yeah, they, they came.
Well, the, it looks like it was 4,425, and then we had a $400 credit from that. But it came from county operations, so either you guys or Brayden signed it. But I could.
No, I'm, I'm just, I knew that we'd had a conversation about it, so if people wanted to go to the chamber events and activities, I just wanted to bring that out, that we have paid that, and we are part of it, so.
Yeah, Jen was one that specifically wanted.
Well, and, and like I said, we do it this year, but we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a conversation with Matt and those guys, because us paying four grand, I think is a little, there's about 10 of us that go, and there's other entities that are far smaller than us, that, or same size as us, that don't pay as much as we do. And so, there's, there's a conversation that needs to be had there.
So I'll let Kelly know that we shouldn't be paying for any other chamber costs, other than, they'll probably still charge you for the meals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you go to those, but other than that, there really should be nothing, okay, I'll let her know that.
And then the other one that just caught me was the one right underneath there. Coldies and emergency, where, where was that at? $207 and 9 cents, is that out at the jail?
Sin House, oh, it's, oh, we shouldn't be paying for emergency.
Well, it's.
Or cold medicine.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm.
We, uh.
We're not doing that in a department, if it's at the jail, I understand it. If it's in a department, I, we shouldn't be doing that.
Juvenile detention, that's why.
Okay, okay.
Because no departments get, we stopped that a while ago.
If we don't get cold medicine in the departments?
Well, we're refused to buy that, and it was kind of a contradiction, because you're taking cold medicine, but operating heavy equipment.
Yeah.
Hey, as long as it doesn't make you sleepy, I mean, you know, hey.
Yeah, I don't know.
Like I said, I just kind of breezed through this, and some of them just caught me. The next one is Egan Ranch.
That is for Egan Tower. That says South Tower.
Oh, South on Tower, okay, okay.
We just paid him for it.
Okay, and then in Enterprise Fleet Management?
Those are all the vehicle leases.
Do we have one vehicle that's $4,000?
I would need to double check what that's for, that might be.
That might be a road grade or something like that?
That might be Roman Bridge for all of theirs.
Okay, and that was my question, because there's a couple more that, like 15, but.
Let me look.
A monthly charge for one vehicle at 4,000, I'm like, wait a minute, what are we doing?
So the 4,000 is, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Okay.
So that's the negative, is they're all the same line item, and she didn't enter them separate. Or this report consolidated them, I'm not sure, because I've got it listed out separate here.
Okay, and that, and that's fine, I'm just learning with this report, things that come to my attention.
Well, and I think as, and as.
I like the style of the report.
And as we're going back through it, the whole thing too is, is we're also getting, you guys might get and understand this, but now as we're looking at something that's brand new, hey, we really do need to have something more or less, so it's, it is the work in progress, and we understand that.
And that's when I told her on that one, if we have to keep using that, we might have to put, change the description a little bit. We were excited, because we don't have to put the vendor name in anymore at the beginning, because it prints. So we have more space, but we need to see how we can better utilize that space for the description.
Great American Finance, there was a 52, 52 late fee?
Yeah, so that was for D6. Those copy releases, we had some timing issues on them getting signed by the TCA. So we had late fees. So I asked her to put those out separate. Jason and I are going to sit down with Kerry Hong, because he was gone for personal reasons, then he had medical reasons, and so that delayed the processing. We've had the conversation before, that we don't want invoices in his office, because then our office can't watch the flow of getting them signed. Yet, when he comes in after hours, he wants them in his office, so that he has access to sign them. So we're gonna work out a process, that they can be in his office, but someone has to monitor that they're being processed.
And we had the same problem with his office with lows, right?
I believe so.
Okay, and that's.
Which is why we started putting invoices in our office, but then this came up. So we'll, we'll.
And then, this one. Sherry Davies, per diem for IAC conference, 2065.
I think I looked at that one, and it was this.
Mine was 106.
Hang on, I didn't click mileage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, mine was like, whatever, I don't even know if my wife's cashed it yet.
Well, 50 cents, though, is telling me that it's probably.
Mileage, couldn't be mileage, because it'd be more than that if it was mileage.
Well, we don't pay mileage.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm, it says per diem, and I just.
And what she should have done, is she should have done the per diem, and there was two entries, I thought, on those. Because I remember looking at that this morning.
Because we've had a conversation about mileage more than once, I just.
Is she paying for gas, and just can reimburse for gas?
Well, that's mileage.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, if she took like a county vehicle, and she was paying the gas, that she didn't have to.
But that's not per diem.
But 50 cents wouldn't be per diem, we don't, we don't take 50 cents.
It's 100 and, $100.50 more than what my per diem was. They didn't have any, she didn't have any longer days, any other part of a conference, so.
And we wouldn't have allowed her, even if she didn't join the meals, she, you don't get them if you choose not to participate. Hey, Michelle, can you pull the invoice for me for Sherry Davies? It's a weird amount, yeah, her reimbursement, I need to see, I need you to tell me what that was for, please. There it is. She's gonna, then we'll be able to type, she's gonna pull it, it was either that or run down and grab it.
That's mine, no, I, like I said, I just knew what mine was, and as I go through there, that's a pretty big discrepancy to me.
50, well, 50 cents, we do call dollars on per diems, so. There has to be the mileage for gas. Okay, was there, so there was per diem, was there also mileage or? So, $94 per diem. And mileage. That went separate, that one's good, okay, perfect, that's what I needed. Thank you, bye. There was my, uh, mileage.
Mileage.
So, I can follow up with her and ask her if there was not a county vehicle available. I know the September and the February ones are difficult, because there's so many people going. I know we had to use a assessor vehicle.
We used one of their cars.
So, let me see if she chose not to use an assessor vehicle, or if she just preferred to take.
I know that there was vehicles available, because our office had arranged, because we had five people that were going. And our office had arranged for a second car, and then Terrell and Brayden decided to take their own vehicles.
And I didn't file for fuel.
And so, I know that there was a vehicle available.
I, I can get the question answered, and then I can let you know, and you can follow up, we will hold the check, how's that?
Okay.
And then if, or do you want me to have the conversation that we're going to only pay for the per diem?
We're only paying for per diem unless she comes as something to justify going against county policy.
Okay, so what we will do is, we will void that check, so if you want to go ahead and line through it, put void in your initials. Then what we'll do is reprocess that next week, so you'll see it again next week, for just the per diem and hotel.
And I, I'm not trying to be petty, but I'm just.
It's consistency.
I go through this, and I, to me, that's what I was wondering, if it was a, not you, but somebody hiding mileage when we'd had that conversation multiple times.
Well, and when she entered that, she should have entered the per diem separate from the mileage, that's normal practice. She's a little overwhelmed right now with entries, so I think that one just slipped, and she entered it toll. But she also shouldn't be doing it that way, because they don't have to make a phone call, and we should just be at the top. So, but yes, we'll avoid that, and we'll issue it next week.
And that's really as far as I got through going through it, so I, I'll trust you in the rest of it.
If I can get a copy of the sample report for next Thursday, then I'll send it to you, so that you guys will kind of know what you're looking for before you get the final, if you would like.
And I, I just want you to know that I appreciate all that your office does. I know that it's, it's new, and we'll all work through it, so.
And hopefully it'll get faster and better.
It will, it will, I have no doubt, but thank you.
The good thing is, is we can scan everything now, but that's also taking more time. But, once you go in and look at the line items, you can see the invoices. So what I should probably do is start bringing my laptop, and then I can pull the invoices.
All right.
I like what I see, so thank you.
There's invoices, right, next. Commissioner. Invoices.
These two.
Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the invoices, commissioner report, and credit report for credit applications as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Actually, we have salary rate approval forms, we only have one.
And then question, can we get rid of the technology request form line item nowadays?
Yeah. Yeah, I think if it goes through, as long as it goes through that.
As long as Adam's the one that's doing it, that's the whole.
I don't see why we need to.
As long as Adam's the only one that's ordering those things, because that was the problem that we got into last time, is people had money in their account, so they would just go take the purchase order, and go down to Costco and buy six laptops, and call it good.
Right, right.
And, and that's the problem, that, that's why that came into place, is because then maintenance had, or IT had to try and figure out how to get computers that really didn't meet the specs that we needed, or had programs, there was, what, four computers that were bought that were not big enough to support the programs that they bought. Oh, it was more than that, it was.
For that one department you're thinking of, I think, I think there were eight.
Was that eight?
I think there were eight or nine computers that were purchased that didn't meet the specs. With the situation you're thinking of a year and a half ago, two years ago.
And then there was a department that bought a flat screen, thinking they'd hook it into something, and realized that, no, they couldn't do it, make it do what they want, it, it's not a touchscreen, guys, you just don't go buy a TV and turn it into a touchscreen, it doesn't work that way. Just saying. But as long as Adam's the one that's doing the purchasing, if, as long as he's the only one that's doing that.
Can we send out a memo from our office, just saying that Adam's the only one that can make technology purchases?
I don't know, it's a small deviation from the agenda, but this pertains. Once upon a time, we used to do department head elected official trainings countywide. What if we scheduled that again, and then items like this could be brought up? And it's the best way to approach all county employees, because you've got the right people in the room that will disperse the information down.
We'll, we'll say it in person, and then we'll do it in writing.
Yeah. Because the benefit of that, we could do that, we could talk about, we could introduce, Emma.
Well, what is gonna?
You could have a handful of items, you could see if Brian's got anything he could do an update on.
We could talk about the holiday leave policy.
Exactly.
It's been a while since we've had a department head meeting.
You know, there was that time that we were doing it monthly, and I think that, that's almost too much, because then people felt like it was the same thing, just beating the drum, but maybe we should try it quarterly this, next year? Something like that.
There might still be people that don't know, Brayden.
Well, maybe, maybe we do one in November, so we can talk about the holiday policy, this and that.
And then tell them we're gonna get rid of this, as long as people make sure they go through.
Yeah, as, as long as it's, and that's the whole thing, as long as people are not buying things that basically you're, or my favorite one, the $40,000 software package, that was a rock.
Brayden, let's put it on a Thursday, like at 1:30. Do that, like for a second weekend, November.
Okay, vote for a second.
That's what we have there.
When we did those in the past, they used to send out to certain people and say, is there anything that you've been brought up? Give them 10, 15 minutes.
There's the man.
Okay, thank you for that deviation, slight deviation.
Salary rate approval forms?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Next, we have beer, wine, liquor licenses, and a preferred form.
That is awesome.
I have to check to go to see how many more we've got, but.
It's getting thinner, the stack is thinner.
Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reapprove the beer, wine, liquor licenses as presented.
All right. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, next, we have, Ryan's not here. So.
Brayden is.
Brayden, let's go ahead and go with you.
All right, so I really don't know much about this, I was just told it was something that caused mass confusion last year. So, we thought it would be prudent to get it on the agenda, and talk about the, the policy for departments with the, with upcoming holidays. And I'm not really sure what you guys did for the employee appreciation, paying time off thing, but that was also something that, as I was speaking to Shannon and Christie, they thought they're talking with you guys about as well. So I don't really know what the specifics were last year, but getting a conversation started on how we're gonna approach that this year is basically the point of bringing this to you today.
So we're gonna need to have some conversations on holidays off, because we have June 19th, which is gonna be a holiday coming up that is gonna be observed, but tax day's the next day. So, you're gonna be closed on the 20th?
In the budgeting process?
It's just salaries.
It's just salaries.
It's just salaries, it would just be another day of people.
So like this year.
I just can't remember if that was like a special thing we had to do to account for that, or.
I think the only thing we would need to do is adjust the policy, because right now, it doesn't count.
It's not on there.
That day for a holiday.
So we have June 19th, which is observed, which is on a Sunday, so it would be observed on Monday, the 20th, the day that taxes are due. So we would need to make a discussion of whether the, so the courts have already indicated that they're taking that day off. So, do we want to have the courthouse open on a limited scale for the treasurer's office, to be able to pay taxes? Do we want to just close the courthouse, and we have to deal with it the next day? Or how, how do we do that? That's one, that's one consideration of holiday that's been brought up. And then the other consideration of holiday that always comes up, because Veterans Day's coming up, and some of the other ones, Hal and those guys always ask that if they could work that day, because all the contractors come in, and they still work up, the contractors don't take that day off, but then they were asking to replace that day with the Friday after Thanksgiving.
You already took care of that with the flex schedule, didn't you?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
So then the only thing you would need to do is allow their department to close the office on the Friday.
Well, and, and that would be the, that would be the, but they want to stay open where other departments are closed.
Right, but they would trade it.
Yeah, but we just want to make sure that that's because, and again, as the veterans in the room, I have no problem with them working that day, and not, and if people want to have a problem about why it's not observed, they can have a conversation with me about it, I don't care. But I just look at it, the people that work that day in that department, the, the contractors, the builders and all that, they don't ever take that day off. And it would be better to flex it to, to behind Thanksgiving, and use it, that's what they want, that's what they're gonna want to do. And there's a lot of departments that way that talk about some of those days.
So for the employees that are non-salaried, have them just document their time, use the comp the day after Thanksgiving. And then for your salaried people, they would just flex schedule it.
Okay, what I would, what I would like though, too, is this just something in.
The only, I'm just, the only concern I would have is, the commission has already declared Veterans Day to be a holiday.
That's what I was getting at.
And so.
We would have to amend the ordinance.
Now we're gonna have you work on this date, we'll just switch it to this date, I don't know.
We're not telling them, we're giving them the option, so by, by department.
Yeah, but where we've declared, so we have a, we have a standing ordinance in place, that would be the, the commission.
Designated holidays, which June 19th isn't.
It is, yeah, and we're gonna have to, yeah. And that's what we're talking about, is we're gonna have to redo that ordinance, and in that ordinance, the language would need to say, while these are observed holidays, they may be, you know, that, but that's what we need to amend.
Give us that flexibility.
I think that this is one that we need to talk about in the elected officials and department head meeting. It's far enough in advance for some of those things. When it comes to the, the gift or whatever, we call that on, in December.
The appreciation.
Yeah, the appreciation, I, I still want to do that.
Yeah.
Rather, how we do it, rather, we set a timeline like we did before. You got between this date and this date to take the, the four hours or whatever, how many hours we.
To be used in one lump sum.
To be used in one lump sum.
And the supervisor tracks it.
Just, just like we did last year, I didn't, I don't think it was a big problem.
I think last year was better than the year before, the year before, we had a few departments use it a couple times. Our few employees used it a couple times, but I think last year, when talking to Kedron this morning, she said that she thought it was fairly smooth.
I thought, where we put it on the supervisor's responsibility.
And if you can't take it, I'm sorry, but find the time to take it if you can.
So we're planning leaving that as is, as long as you use it in a lump sum?
Yeah, that's something that.
Well, well, but yeah, I, I thought that, and that was the whole point of why we did it, of having the timeline, you know, it starts December 1st, or Thanksgiving, or whatever, we start it, and then we end it usually at the end of January. We, we leave it in that timeframe, because we want people to take for the holiday.
Yeah. They mentioned it was for like kids' plays and family.
Yeah, and the whole way, it started getting brought up as people, you know, hey, you need to take an afternoon off and go do some Christmas shopping or do something, because, I mean, think about, most of our employees work in the time that, you know, you don't really have an opportunity to get rid of, you know, if you don't have kids, or you know, or, you know.
Use it when they're at school.
Yeah, but use it, that was kind of the point, was to be able to take an afternoon off, and go to the kids' play, and then go do Christmas shopping, or, or go hang out and do whatever you feel like doing.
Won't be any much Christmas shopping this year, because there will be nothing on the shelves.
Yeah, that's all.
But we did do four hours last year, right?
We'll start it at Halloween.
They're gonna have to travel farther to get their Christmas shopping done.
Did we do anything on Thanksgiving?
We didn't, they have Thanksgiving.
But you had to use later.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I say, there's enough people that are asking, and, and the conversation in, and the city of Pocatello and a couple others, they don't, they don't observe like Columbus Day, and others that way. They trade for it, and that's what I'm saying, is we have enough people that want to do this on Thanksgiving anyway. Why don't we just, and I know the courts have to stay open, and, and I understand that. And, and maybe that's the, maybe that's, and that's why we said the trade on like Columbus Day, or one of these other ones. Hey, sorry, courts, you're gonna get, you're gonna be on, the courts will be off on Columbus Day, everybody else will be working.
But I think for this year, we do it just like we did last year, and then we'll talk about the 19th, and then we'll talk about switching.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get an ordinance in place, so.
But currently, I'd just like to stay the pattern that we set last year.
We have, Veterans Day is coming up in, in.
Is that the flex time, too, that you're talking about, the pattern from last year?
Or one of those days, if we're gonna, if we're gonna give them.
No, not the flex time.
We, we allowed employees to take the day after Thanksgiving, but they had to use time to do it, but it was.
And then the elected officials can deal with the flex schedule for exempt employees.
We're, we're gonna have to have a conversation fairly quick, because Veterans Day's coming up here.
Well, and that's why I say, this year, we keep it the same.
Well, but, but planning and zoning wants to be able to work on that day, and that's why I say, we've got to go in and amend that ordinance then, within the next two weeks, to be able to do that, so.
As Commissioner Hufnitz said, like if there's an option then, right, like my only concern was if they have a supervisor saying you have to come in and work on this date, and it's celebrated as a holiday by the county.
Yes.
That's where there could be an issue, but if there's an option, and there are things for it, it's like, okay, you can choose to work on this date or this date.
I don't think our ordinance has the option.
Yeah, I don't think it does either, I think it just says, these are the days that we observe, and what we would need to say is.
So, can we just redo the ordinance real quick?
Yes, but we would have to.
Talk about the rest of the stuff at the elected official meeting.
What about the, like, I don't think that means they can't work that day, like the sheriff's office still works.
Well, what it says is it's observed.
They would be getting comp time for that day, which would be used for the.
We've also removed an ordinance that says that it's the commission, that elected officials no longer opening and closing. We have, we have two ordinances that we need to have some cleanup on, to make sure that we don't get an employee that's irritated, or has an issue, and then we've caused a liability issue, because somebody was forced to work on a day, and our ordinance says that we will do this, and they don't have the right to close the hall. close the holiday, or, or office on that day, or they can't make us work that day, because we have two ordinances that then you're in direct conflict with. We need to just clean it up and make it, and make it correct, that's all I'm saying, is, is, and if we're gonna do that, and we're gonna allow planning and zoning to open, that I haven't done before.
That we need to have that discussion, that big part of it, with the elected officials.
Yes.
And the department heads.
Before Veterans Day.
If they're, yeah.
Well, we can have it, or we can, to me, we just tell the, right now, we just tell the department head if this employee doesn't want to work this day, or wants to work this day, they can use that comp time on the day after Thanksgiving. We're not forcing anybody to take any holiday or not to take a holiday, but we're allowing, so I, I think that we have time actually to move forward with it and let the department heads, just kind of like we did last year, in my opinion.
Well, but then you run into the issue, though, is if you say this department head, this is where we're gonna observe, and if somebody in that department, well, fine, I'll just come in and work on Thanksgiving Day. They're not the ones that have access to the buildings, they don't have access to the facilities, they don't have security.
And if you don't.
Well, and we don't have to, we can designate which holiday.
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
Right now.
We just, we just.
Do that on the record, as we allow them, but I, I think that some departments may not want to, I think we have a house department that wants to do this, some departments may not.
Can we, can we just make a motion on the record right now that gives Veterans Day the option until we can clean up our, until we can talk to their.
I don't, I don't think you could do it today, because we don't have it, um, well, there's a discussion, but it's.
It's not marked for action.
But it's not specifically on that, and so I would say you could probably do that on Tuesday, and also what you would do is you just amend that ordinance.
Potential action items, so every one of these are marked for action.
So, we could then, today.
I think you could.
So, we could, we could make a motion to give the departments the ability to flex on Veterans Day.
Talking about moving an ordinance.
Until we can change the resolution to be more.
I think, I think you want to be careful with that, because if you give someone on Monday.
Well.
Well, actually, that might be okay, as long as the office isn't open, I'm just thinking the courthouse. If anybody in the courthouse works, that's fine, as long as they're not open to the public, because once you open to the public, then you gotta have security.
Well, and so Jason just had a good point, let's just see if we can get an elected officials meeting on like Monday, and let's just take a poll and see where everybody's at, because it would solve the problem real quick, and then
Love it.
Tuesday, we can just say, hey, this is what we're doing.
Love it, I mean.
Is that good?
Other wrench to throw at a holiday is, in the past, the commission has allowed offices, or the courthouse to close at three on certain days, this year's gonna be a little bit weird, because Christmas is on a Saturday, so Friday's the day to observe. Serve, wow, and then same thing with, um, New Year's Eve, so we probably won't need that one, but people will ask, so if you want to throw that as a clarification, either in the department head meeting, and then I think that it.
So, the twenty fourth is the day that we're observing the holiday?
Yep.
That'll be.
Yeah, so they, we're not gonna have the twenty third close early, you have Christmas Eve all day off.
Yeah, and then, um, Thanksgiving, I think you'd let us leave at three. So, just putting that out there as a reminder that you will get questions on it, so you need to still have those who are dealing with them as they come up.
So, I, and I, and I, I want to give our employees the benefits as, as much as we can, but we still have to function as, as courthouse. Uh, so, if we get this on the agenda for Monday, that's plenty of time to, to talk about it with everybody, and, and then if we need to have a resolution or anything else, we can have that on Tuesday and move forward.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good.
It's harder than it needed to be.
Well, there's, there's a lot of like cleanup, there's a lot of cleanup things that we need.
More fun than it needed to be.
Well, that's kind of what I thought going into it, like, why do we need a meeting, why do we need to put that on the objective?
There's, there's a lot of cleanup on, that just over the years, that is, we've changed things, we need to go through and we need to just clean it up.
Government.
Because it's government.
And you have employees that are used to certain things, and so when you change that, they're like, I don't get that anymore, so.
Well, I missed June nineteenth, I mean, that come up last year, the day before. What the heck?
And Jen will be right in the middle of that conversation.
Well, and that's why we say we need to talk to her, because she, she's the one that brought it up to me, and that, and it's gonna always be, and so what happens then? When it happens or falls on, um, certain days and you have basically the days leading up are closed? What happens next year, when it's on, June nineteenth is on a Monday, um, and so you're gonna have, yeah, it's gonna be messy.
Everybody pays their taxes, the person's one.
That'll be a conversation on Monday then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ryan?
All right, I went down.
Is that backup or what?
I think this is the right topic. So, yes, good morning, so, um, as it's a work session, we just wanted to, um, talk to you about an idea and, that we've been discussing and have, and actually beyond idea now, we've kind of, um, uh, have made some progress towards it, so Adam has been recruiting for a, um, a network.
Network administrator position.
Administrator, thank you, and for two months now, and.
The second, this is the second search we've done as well. Um, the first one, we had, did offer a position and hire somebody, and he left us within a month to go back to his original job, so we have been trying to recruit for another couple of months, we've had about ten applicants, out of that ten, nine were qualified to look at, and out of that nine, none were qualified to interview. They just don't meet any of the minimum specs, none of them had networking experience whatsoever, let alone the certification we'd like to have as the, as the qualifier. So, what we've kind of done, and I spoke with Jason about this a little bit, kind of an idea that had come up was someone in my department currently, Dorian Hitchcock, has taken over most of this duty for networking stuff now, he's not classically trained as a network analyst technician, but he has the drive and desire to do it, so what we had kind of discussed was would there be a way to use some of the salary savings from the open position in order to be able to take and train him and offer some type of career development ladder or path towards moving into this position, because he's expressed interest in it. He shows the desire for it, and I think he has the aptitude.
Let me stop you for a minute.
Okay.
We're talking about a certain individual.
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to go into executive session?
It is about an individual.
It is, we've identified.
Just guessing their qualifications for a job.
Yeah.
If you're not using the name and you're referring to the position that is currently occupied.
We've already done that.
But I've already said his name, yeah, and his name is in this plan, so.
Do we need to save it for another time?
I don't, I don't, it's not.
Well, can we just talk about the plan?
No, I'm just saying, right here, meaning to approve claims executive session under Idaho Code regarding personnel and potential action following adjournment. So, it is on the agenda.
We have A and B on there that we can go into.
That we can go into executive session, and I'm just.
Miss.
Right, oh, no, and I, you never have to go into executive session if you don't want to, but that's why I was asking, if we're talking about like qualifications and going through someone's, um, resume, basically, then I think that'd be appropriate to go into executive session for discussing that much detail. But if it's just general staffing needs, then we have to stay on.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into executive session under Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six, uh, one A and B to discuss matters of personnel.
Commissioner Loeser?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuddy?